On our website, sedgwickcounty.org, following this morning's meeting. Commissioners have plexiglass barriers between them, staff and people in the room are socially distanced, and we are also wearing our masks. I have mine here, but I'm at the podium. I'd like to remind everyone that this Saturday, March 20th, the Dole VA is hosting a COVID-19 vaccine clinic from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And so that is for anyone who is enrolled in the VA healthcare. If you have questions about your enrollment status, or if you're eligible, please call 316-685-2221 and the extension 53132. Or if you'd like to schedule an appointment, please dial 316-469-0914. You can also find more information about this vaccine clinic on our Facebook page and Twitter account, and then you can also find more information on our website. On the agenda this morning, we have a proclamation related to COVID-19 and a discussion of the local health order and a COVID-19 vaccine update. And so with that, Chairman, I will start, let you start the meeting.
Okay. Good morning. Thank you, Kate. Good morning, everybody. Thank you, Commissioners, once again for being available to come to a special meeting of Tuesday, March 16th. I'll call the meeting to order of the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
President.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present. Next item, please.
Proclamations. Item A, proclamation declaring the one-year anniversary of Sedgwick County's first COVID-19 case.
Okay. Commissioner Lopez.
Right.
Do you have something?
I could, but if...
No, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna introduce, you know, Commissioner Lopez, about a month and a half ago, she came to Communications and, you know, really wanted to highlight the one year anniversary. And so it was a project that me and my team took on wholeheartedly, and we're really excited. We've got a video to show for you guys today, so we're really excited kind of how it turned out, so.
Well, first, I want to thank you guys. I mean, I came with an idea and not really a whole lot more, and you guys really did everything to put it together, so thank you so much. I think this was too big of a time to just pass up, so I appreciate that.
We're tracking the rapidly changing situation with the global coronavirus pandemic.
In the last hour, the World Health Organization named the new coronavirus a pandemic.
The first case of coronavirus has hit Kansas.
Today, we learned that Kansas Department of Health and Environment did confirm with our Sedgwick County Health Department a presumptive positive case.
Hi, I'm Kate Flavin.
And I'm Alejo Cabral, and we're here at Interz Bank Arena. Thank you, Interz Bank Arena, for hosting us, and hopefully, in the near future, hosting all of you at one of their upcoming events. March 19th marks the anniversary of the first COVID-19 case in Sedgwick County, a moment that hit home for us.
And so now, we present to you, Sedgwick County, COVID-19, one year later.
You know, this past year has been difficult, to say the least. It's been challenging for our families, our businesses, our children, our schools, and our churches, especially our mental and physical health. We've come a long way from where it all started. Take a moment and look back over the last year. How has COVID-19 impacted you, your family, your community?
I want to thank everyone that has made difficult choices and that has helped us and helped the community during this time, but particularly the Sedgwick County Health Department and all the staff. It's just been amazing how everyone has stepped up. My whole heart of thanks for everything that you have done and everything that you will continue to do.
We know that art is one way to help manage your mental health, so we've checked in with local artist and comp care employee Kevin Hansen to commemorate the anniversary with a painting. Our community quickly came together to fight the novel coronavirus and COVID-19, and so it's through local businesses, community organizations, and people like you, we've been able to fight it.
I am honored and thankful from the bottom of my heart for everyone in this community, from private and public sector, from education, government, business, and industry, that really collaborated and worked together to get us through this pandemic. And I do believe that this county, this city, will be much stronger as a result of all the work that we've done in collaboration for the greater public good.
One of the things that was missing was a lab that could turn around results really, really quickly, so people could feel safe and get to work. So we focused on what we could do at Wichita State, and that was to create a high-throughput lab using our expertise in robotics. So going forward, we know that this is going to be a critical piece of the infrastructure to keep this community safe, healthy, and working.
I've been so proud of Wichita to see the way we've come together. The business community really rallied, to be generous with each other, help each other find resources, and to be there for each other, and grateful for the partnership with the county and the city and the COVID Task Force. And I really think it helped our community get through this. That's part of what's great about being in Wichita, and so grateful to see the light at the end of the tunnel now, and when we look back, grateful for the way many people sacrificed for each other.
Hand sanitizer quickly became a major source of protection, but at one point, it was really difficult to get your hands on some. Thankfully, Wichita Brewing Company started making it instead of its beer.
We did a single batch of sanitizer. It was about 750 gallons, but we've done that probably close to 20 times for a total of about 15,000 gallons. We're just thrilled that we're able to be a part of helping out where we felt like we could help.
Having worked in the medical industry for 15 years, finding a way to get control of COVID-19 was important for newly-elected Commissioner Sarah Lopez.
This year has been extremely challenging, to say the least. We've come a long way in the last year, and that's really because all of the sacrifices our community has made and is continuing to make. I did not want the anniversary of our first COVID-positive patient to go by without thanking everyone. If anything, this year has deepened my love and appreciation for this community, and I just want to thank each and every one of you.
From one healthcare provider to all of the others in our community, I want to extend a big thank you for all of the hard work that's been done over the last year. I'm particularly proud of everyone in the EMS system, from the dispatchers that answer the first 911 call, through the EMTs and paramedics that transport and provide our life-saving care, all the way to the hospital and discharge planners that take care of our people getting back to their normal lives. Every day, our providers have come to work with the attitude and expertise that we need to deliver incredible care to our community, and I couldn't be more proud.
As quickly as grocery stores could restock their shelves, food and toilet paper and similar items were gone, leaving many families without. Grocery store staff quickly became essential workers, working around the clock to make sure we had food.
Our teams rose the occasion higher than they've ever done before, as we had to fill emptier shelves than we've ever seen, we've had to actually clean deeper and more often, and all the while, never losing sight of the standards we have for delivering on customer service. As we move forward, we'll be stronger than ever before.
Before we move on, let's check in on artist Kevin Hansen and how he's doing with his painting. I remember my first nasal COVID-19 test. Man, was that uncomfortable, but testing is necessary to know whether we have COVID-19 or not.
Wichita State University put up this beautiful lab, testing upwards of 3,000 people a day in our community. I want to congratulate Sarah as the technical director, and her team, who are on the downhill side of this, that just stay positive, test negative, get your vaccine, and we'll move on.
This lab has been a game changer to get people to have rapid, very high-quality testing. Data's actually looking a little bit better, and I'm actually kind of excited now. I think the light is at the end of the tunnel. And I think what I've learned in this pandemic is that we didn't know what we were doing early on, we figured it out. And I'm so proud of all the people in this community, especially this laboratory from Wichita State University, working together. We are winning this war on this pandemic.
Dr. Gerald Minns serves an important role as Sedgwick County's local health officer. One of the important roles in his position is to issue local health orders. Now, however you feel about the orders, he shares with us how these were not easy decisions to make.
I felt it a challenge to deal with this. The thing I didn't expect about it was all the media attention. Never, ever thought that this would attract this much media attention. I get calls, oh, two or three times a day to be on a Zoom meeting for the television stations. It's been a challenge for everybody, and I am looking forward to this being over with. Once we get everybody vaccinated and things back up, I think we'll all be returning to what was, we all consider normal, and I look forward to that day so much.
I want to thank each and every one of those that have been involved in this fight, especially those on the front line, such as our doctors, nurses, and other healthcare workers, our health department, the people that are giving the vaccines that you see behind me today. Together, we can make this a great place. We have done that. It is a great place to live, work, play, and pray.
The Sedgwick County Health Department continues to partner with minority organizations to ensure that communities of color have access to the COVID-19 vaccine.
I know the past year was a difficult one for everybody, but especially to our brown and black communities. I encourage you to think about a couple of things. First, get safe. How do you get safe? That's by getting the vaccination as soon as it's available for you. The second is stay safe. Remember to wash your hands, watch your distance, and continue to wear your mask.
La pandemia nos ha hecho reflexionar sobre tantas cosas, dándonos la oportunidad de mostrar empatía y amor de diferentes maneras. Y aún cuando estamos a punto de salir adelante, es importante que no bajemos la guardia en cuanto al uso de la mascarilla, el distanciamiento social, y el lavado de manos. Es importante que estemos informados sobre las vacunas del COVID-19. Por ti, por mí, por nuestra comunidad.
I've been living in Wichita City for over 40 years. And regarding COVID-19, I've seen a lot of people here, more than 10,000 people, who don't want to get COVID. The reason is that in this city, I've heard that more than 10 people have died of COVID. So I would like to ask all of the people here, to take advantage of this problem and protect the country.
Just as the keeper is standing at a point of connection, we must remember the connections we lost this year. More than 500 families in our community are grieving the loss of a loved one. Many of us are grieving the loss of friendships. This year has been more than tough. It has broken many of us down. As we reflect, it's important to remember, we all want the same things. We want a community of joy to raise our families and a safe place to lay our heads at night. So just as the keeper has weathered all storms, we are strong enough to get through this together. In March of 2020, Governor Laura Kelly moved schools to remote learning. Households were definitely impacted by this decision. Many parents had to find resources to educate their children at home while also continuing to work to provide for their family. Every school district in Sedgwick County was certainly hit with this decision, and they had to find new and innovative ways to keep students engaged and educated.
One year ago, we were preparing for spring break. Little did we know what the next 12 months would involve. Through all the challenges our community has faced, we've shown resilience. We're thankful to have students back in the classrooms and for all your support. On behalf of all of the students and staff in the Wichita Public Schools and across Sedgwick County, we say...
Thank you!
Over the past year, we have faced unprecedented challenges as a community. It has not been easy for any of us, but together, we can and we are moving forward. But we need your help. I encourage everyone to get the vaccine when it's made available to you. We need to work together to protect not only ourselves, but our neighbors in our community. We must do our part to keep Wichita and Sedgwick County safe.
Several families have lost a loved one. And the next story, Joanna, who contracted COVID-19 but didn't know about it.
In September, Joanne and her sister got together to help their 95-year-old mom.
And she came out here. I was already positive and didn't know it, and I inadvertently gave it to my sister, who gave it to her husband.
Joanne's brother-in-law, Wayne Gibson, contracted the virus.
Final days and hours just went quickly. He just kind of took a turn for the worst. It was unexpected.
Wayne was 64 years old.
He's kind of best defined by 40 years of thinking about his family's happiness before anything else, so their happiness was his happiness.
Joanne says family is what got them through this difficult year.
Don't let yourself, you know, drop your guard, put your guard down, and then lose your family member at that last turn. Like, I would think now is the time to safeguard your family more than ever. This is like, we can see the end, so don't lose them now.
It's just been such a hard year and a tough time for our community, so thank you for your distancing efforts and good hygiene and masking and limiting, you know, large crowds. Everything right now is just trending so well. Our infection numbers are down, our hospital numbers are down, we've got vaccines rolling, and as you have the ability and become eligible, and that's happening much more quickly than anticipated, I would ask that you please consider getting a vaccine. We look forward to what we hope is the final chapter of this very long book of COVID, and we can get back to a more, what we all consider, normal lifestyle and how we lead our lives. So just thank you so much for what you've done.
Thank you for taking the time to recognize Sedgwick County and the countless individuals, businesses, and organizations who are leading the fight against COVID-19. We've come a long way since last March.
And now, thankfully, we're able to vaccinate residents. So if you'd like to schedule your appointment to receive the COVID-19 vaccine, please visit sedgwickcounty.org.
Wow, very impressive. Thank you, Kate, and staff. Akeem, thanks for putting that together. Does anybody have a comment before we read the proclamation? Okay, we're ready for the proclamation.
I want to thank you guys again. That was fantastic. Kind of choked me up a little bit because I knew Wayne personally. I grew up with him. His daughter was my best friend growing up, so that was a little bit harder than I had thought it would be to see that, so I really appreciate everything you did for that. So I will read this now. Whereas the United States Department of Health and Human Services declared a public health emergency for COVID-19 beginning January 27, 2020, the World Health Organization declared a pandemic on March 11, 2020. A state of disaster emergency was proclaimed for the state of Kansas on March 12, 2020. And on March 16, 2020, excuse me, the chairman of the Board of County Commissioners of Sedgwick County issued a state of local disaster emergency declaration. And whereas since Sedgwick County's first positive COVID-19 test result on March 19, 2020, there have been more than 45,000 COVID-19 cases in Sedgwick County, and sadly, more than 550 residents have lost their lives to this disease. And whereas the local economy has been seriously impacted by the pandemic resulting in business closures, loss of revenue, and loss of jobs, and whereas, beginning December 23, 2020, Sedgwick County Health Department began vaccinating residents, on February 26, 2021, residents age 65 and older were able to be able to be vaccinated, and on March 11, all Phase II categories could receive their vaccine. And whereas Sedgwick County Health Department has provided 75,693 vaccine doses to residents as of March 15, now therefore be it resolved that Chairman Pete Meitzner and the Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim March 19, 2021, as the one-year anniversary of Sedgwick County's first COVID-19 case, and strongly encourage residents to continue to prevent the spread of COVID-19 within the community by following the three W's: wash your hands, wear a mask, and watch your distance, and get the COVID-19 vaccine when they are able. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners and Board of Health. Adrian Byrne, Health Director. What a year it has been. In some ways, it's gone really fast, and in other ways, tremendously long year. I know that most of us have aged well beyond a year during this time. We are at a different place. I remember thinking, you know, if only the vaccine would get here, what a difference that will make for our community. Well, now the vaccine is here, and the light is at the end of the tunnel. We're not as close to that light yet as we need to be because people, there's a lot of people that we need vaccinated, and we are moving to three and four, stage, phases three and four on Monday, so much, I think, more quickly than a lot of us thought that that would happen. But I want to thank everybody. I really appreciate this proclamation, and I want to thank the whole community for their part in helping us get where we are. And again, we're not done yet. We still need to wear, at least, wear our masks, wash our hands, and continue to social distance. And I am especially proud of the Health Department for the long hours and work, as well as other people around the community. You know, most people have put in a lot of work and sacrifices, so again, we have a ways to go, but we are going to get there by getting more people vaccinated. So thank you for this.
Okay, thank you. I'll make a motion that we approve the proclamation as presented.
Second.
And a motion, a second. Any other comments, questions? Being none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New business, item B, discussion of the local health order and COVID-19 vaccine update.
Commissioners, Tom Stoles, County Manager, good morning. This item has, as the clerk just announced, two components to it. One is the health order, and as has become our norm, Justin Wagner will get up and kind of go through the summary of the order that Dr. Minns just signed yesterday and take questions, and Dr. Minns himself is here today. And then the second part will be a vaccination update, which we usually do at our Tuesday staffs. Tim will lead that with some of the latest data on vaccinations, and then, of course, we can talk about the new directive from the governor yesterday moving us to Phase III and IV next week. That's going to add some interesting challenges, and we can have the right people in the room today with Dr. Minns and Adrian here to talk through that. So with that, Justin, if you'd start us up with the order, and we'll go one at a time.
Morning, Justin.
Good morning, Commissioners. Justin Wagner, Assistant County Counselor. I guess first off, I was just gonna ask, do any of the Commissioners need a copy of the order handy? I've got a couple of extra copies if you need one. Okay, I'll be right up there. Or Kate's nice enough to do that. Thank you. One and two. All right, Commissioners, again, the order that Dr. Minns issued yesterday, which is Order Number 2021-4, really, the key change in that order is that it would eliminate mass gathering or public gathering restrictions that have been contained in prior orders, where there might be a certain limit on the number of people, whether through a specific number, a fire code capacity percentage, or, for example, like at sporting events, a number of attendees per participant. So those provisions have been not included in his newest order. It does still, his order does still retain provisions regarding mask-wearing and maintaining six feet of social distancing, with essentially the same exceptions that have been in place in prior orders. The order would become effective on March 21, which is when the current order that's in place, it ends on March 20. It would pick up on the 21st of March, the new order would, and it's slated to end on April 30. As the Board of County Commissioners, under state law, you may review, amend, or revoke the order with a simple majority vote. I'd be happy to answer any questions or discuss any portion of the order in more detail, and again, Dr. Minns is also here if you have questions from the medical end of things. Thank you.
Okay. Quite a bit smaller presentation than you've had in the past orders, that's for sure.
Yes, it is.
Does Commissioners have any questions or comments? Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Justin, for presenting this. I do have a couple of questions for Dr. Minns.
Sure.
Good morning, Dr. Minns. Thank you for being here.
Do I need to introduce myself?
Might as well.
Gerald Minns, local health officer.
So my questions really are around, I've been receiving a lot of questions around, what data are you going to use? What metrics are you going to use in order to? We have now lifted the restrictions on gatherings, but you still have masks and distancing written into the order. So I'm just wondering, what guidelines are you using to eliminate masks in the future after April 30?
Well, in addition to the metrics we've been looking at all the time, the hospital numbers and the percent positive cases and number of cases we're seeing per week, in addition, I think another metric that we need to be astute to right now is the percent of people getting vaccinated. I think it's important to know how many people are probably immune to this in our county and how many people are probably not immune, which will help us decide how much further we can go.
So do you have a certain percentage of people vaccinated in our community that you're looking to hit?
I am not an expert in epidemiology. I respect those who are, and I believe the number that's been quoted widely from the CDC officials is their prediction is, on the original virus, about 80% of people vaccinated would be a level we could call herd immunity, where the virus is not able to find enough host to continue to cause infection. Now, one reason we have to be a little careful about that is that was the original virus. The new virus that's come out of Britain seems to be more contagious, and the more contagious a virus it is, the higher percentage of immunity you need to declare herd immunity. So that virus has been fairly restricted in this country, but in some states, it is becoming very common. We've had a few cases here in Kansas, although it's certainly not the majority of the cases at all. So it's like everything with this virus, we'll have to see how things evolve. I think there's major concerns by some officials that if these variants become common, it could be, change the metrics on this and change our predictions on this. Let's hope that doesn't happen.
Okay, so we're not, we don't have a definitive number as of today? Is that kind of what you're saying?
Well, I would say today, if the current majority virus we have, most people think 80% of the population be immune would be, meet the definition of herd immunity.
Okay, so now I guess I'll ask whoever has the vaccine numbers. What is our current level of vaccination amongst all of those in our community who've received it thus far?
Good morning, Tim Coffin, Deputy County Manager. We continue to try and get some concrete numbers from some of the federally allocated immunizations, but we believe right now we're around 25% that have received a second dose. So that's the number where we're at right now.
I think that's all the questions I have for now. Thank you so much.
I'd just like to clarify, though. I consider people immune who've had the virus, so we would add to the people who've gotten the vaccine, those who've had the virus and recovered from it. So usually, natural infection also solicits the immunity that, similar, if not better than the vaccine would.
So how are we tracking those numbers? I mean, we have, is that our recovered number on our site?
We do. We have our 47,000 and something, we have the number of people who have tested positive for the virus on the site.
And I need to correct my statement. I answered questions out of order. I answered your second question first. The 25% is both numbers, the number that have received, an estimation of the number that have received second doses and the number of people that have tested positive in our community.
Okay.
So that's the 25%.
Okay.
It's about even right now, but that's the number.
Thank you.
From here on out, we will add to that number by vaccines, because as you know, the case numbers are fairly low right now, so there won't be a lot of new people who've had the infection to be added, so it's now just getting that 25% up to the higher number will be getting the vaccines in arms.
Good point.
I had a few comments. Would you like me to make those before we have more questions?
Commissioner Lopez, or you have a question?
Either way, it's fine.
Okay, go ahead.
I can just forget the comments if you'd like.
Oh, no, don't forget the comments. Go ahead. I can ask after.
Well, I, first of all, I want to congratulate the video. I think it was excellent, and I think it also reaffirms the fact that we have made a lot of progress in this county. And I want, too, want to thank the community for stepping forward and doing all they've done to get us where we're at today. We're in a much better place than we were earlier this year. However, unfortunately, the virus is still in the community. People are still testing positive. The virus is still available to infect other people, and still, the majority of our population is not immune. So we're not out of the woods yet, but hopefully, as we progress on the immunizations, we can get there fairly soon. As I've already mentioned, the virus continues to evolve and seems to be becoming more infectious and more serious as different variants have surfaced. We already have people in our county who've come down with the United Kingdom variant, and some other variants are proving to be not only more contagious, but some are more serious in terms of the infection they cause in people. So we need to keep track of that as the CDC is doing, and we'll just have to watch that. Fortunately, right now, though, that is not a major component of the infections we're seeing in our county. We know that masks and social distancing work. If there's anyone who doubts that, the literature is very clear about the mask does work in reducing not only coronavirus, but other respiratory viruses. At this juncture in the pandemic, the availability to our community of COVID vaccine is very effective in stopping the spread... effective in stopping the spread of this virus and will be one of the major factors getting us to where we want to be, kind of the final push of this race. We have now three proven vaccines available in Cedric County, the Pfizer, the Moderna, and now the Johnson &amp; Johnson is available in Cedric County. We are making amazing progress, but now not, this is not the time to just give up. It is not the time to just throw away everything and say, okay, the vaccine will get us there. Just not worry about any restrictions. Again, the majority of people in the community are not immune. The virus is still here. The virus will take advantage of our susceptibility. So we need to continue. What is proven to be the most effective measure of preventing spread is the mask mandate, the physical distancing, and all those measures we've been talking about for a long time. I'm quite aware that we all are very proud of our achievements, but I also would admit we're always all tired at this. We're all fatigued. Everybody wants to return to normal. Everyone wants to turn the clock back to January of 2020. I think we're getting close. I think we're, some people have used the analogy of a car race or something, or basketball game. I've used the race of the 26 marathon that they run in the Olympics. I couldn't do the 26-mile marathon. However, if you want to win the marathon, you don't stop running at mile 20, because other people will take you, overcome you, and yet they will win and you will not. And I would say we're about at mile 21, maybe 22 in this race. Maybe I'm being a little optimistic, but I think we're close to the finish line. So we don't want to stop running now. And I don't think we want to just open up everything like some other states have done. I think we need to continue to do what we can with the things that have the least economic impact upon our community. Wearing the mask, the physical distancing, washing our hands really shouldn't be affecting the economic impact on anyone. I know it's annoying. I know it's a inconvenience, but it's, it is effective. And I think that we must continue to do to get to the finish line. So with that, I'll take any other questions you have and...
Okay.
I know.
Commissioner Lopez.
I know. One thing I've heard repeatedly, and I'm sure this is for everybody, is regarding the masks. And can you explain a little bit more of your reasoning to keep masks? I mean, I've, I've reached out to colleagues in the past just to get their opinions and ideas and to see where they're at. But I think it would be really good for the community to hear from you and the team that you work with, kind of your reasoning and thinking behind keeping those.
Well, pretty much what I just said. The virus is still in the community. People are still getting infected. People are still being admitted to hospital. There is still a virus that can be spread to other people. The majority of our population is not immune. The majority of our population is still susceptible to this virus. The majority of our population is potentially made very sick by this virus. Fortunately, we got most of the elderly people vaccinated. So the, those who get the most sick, for the most part, are vaccinated. But we got a lot of other people. And we've had a number of young people who have had bad outcomes from this virus. So I, and again, the mask is well proven. The literature is there that it does prevent spread, and it does reduce the number of people getting infected. So from my perspective, it's a, well, it's an inconvenient thing to do. We've all kind of gotten used to it. Can we, can we continue just to do it for maybe another month or two and help us get to the finish line?
And have we, do we know for sure, once you're vaccinated, that you can't be a carrier of this to other people who haven't been vaccinated yet?
The literature is not very robust on that, although there is a study from Israel that just came out last week that suggests the vaccination does drastically reviews, reduce the likelihood of being a carrier and spreading it to others. Now, that article has not been discussed widely in the medical community yet. I think it still needs to be analyzed and the people debate about it. But that is something that we, the first study we've seen that really gives us some reassurance, that not only does the vaccine prevent disease, but all may, also may prevent dissemination and spread of the virus.
One thing that I kind of worry about is we hear so many people don't want the vaccine. And we're, we're talking about a percentage. Once we get to a percentage of vaccinated, then we can remove the masks. What do you see if we don't hit that percentage? What does this look like? Does the mask, do the masks continue until we get there? Or what would you recommend if we don't hit that herd immunity number?
Well, I'm not ready today to say what I would recommend. I, I think we need to see where the variants are and some of those other factors. But we will keep on, on top of that. I do think you've raised an important issue, though. I think surveys have shown that there's a significant segment of the population who is not in favor of taking the vaccine for various reasons. I think that could slow our progress. And I think we need to find out what some of those apprehensions are based on and try to educate as best we can that the virus at this point is very effective. It appears to be very safe. And if there are medical concerns, we'd like to have that discussion and hope, hope that we can convince people that it's really not a medical issue. It may be another type of issue. But we, we need, as a Board of Health, to address that issue, because that, to me, is the big unknown that we're facing, what percentage of the people are not going to take the vaccine.
Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Menz, I would comment that the elimination of the mass gathering limits and attendees at sports, not only with Commissioner Lopez and I were at the baseball stadium on the announcement yesterday of the Shockers playing there in April 10th, which is another 20 days away, which will be smarter than. But, so the large venues, obviously, but, but over the year, we've all had a lot of passion about weddings and funerals and that these midsize gatherings, which really allow large people that, or large groups that know each other and can practice. So that in itself allows that, that sector of our, of our community to get back to, to a real normal environment. And so I, I want to thank you for considering the relaxation of the, the gathering size in those limits. So that's really good, from my opinion.
Well, some will probably opine that I was being too liberal here. Others would have pined it wasn't liberal enough. And, you know, it's, it's hard, it's hard to find the perfect decision. But I think the community's really stepped forward and we've done a good job of getting the numbers down. I think it's, I'm, I'm willing to accept the risk.
Yeah. And, and spring is here. A lot of, a lot of events are outdoors and so.
Well, since you brought that up, I would say the other thing that's got me a little concerned about is spring break. And...
I didn't mean to bring that up.
I, I hope, I hope our spring breakers can wear the mask, keep the physical distancing and all that, because that is, in addition to the variants and the, the non-vaccination issue, I think that's the other issue I'm a little concerned about. But we'll watch. We'll watch closely.
Well, locally, the St. Patrick's Day parade is always kicked off the spring. And that's been delayed again, or postponed, or redone. So anyway, thank you. Got another question for Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Dr. Menz, thank you very much for being here. We appreciate it every time you come. Let me preface my remarks by saying I do wear the mask. I don't have it on right now, since I'm speaking, but I will continue to wear it in the future, no matter what the order says at the time being. I did come down with COVID and had to go to St. Joseph to get a COVID infusion. And as a result of that, my doctor recommended that I don't get a vaccination until mid-April. So I'm one of the people that are in my age group that have not received the vaccine. Not that I don't want to receive it. It's, it's just because of my personal physician has recommended that I don't do it. But I do have a couple of questions for you. We've been at below 5% on our positivity rate for a month now. And as I recall, and, and again, maybe my memory is a little faulty, but as I recall, one of the metrics that we were using was get us below 5%. And so we've been sitting here now for a month. You talk about trying to get to 80% of our people. And I just went on to our website a little bit ago, and we've got probably hundreds each day of openings for people that can get the vaccine. And they're not getting it, for whatever reason. I have no idea why. I'd be over there in a heartbeat if I could get it. But for some reason, people aren't getting the vaccine. We've got two mass inoculations, locations open right now. We've got the drive-through, I believe, is still open right now. And yet people aren't getting vaccinated. So I don't know how we're ever going to get to 80%. So I, I, I understand that that's your metric right now on removing the masks, but I don't know how we're going to get there, or if we're ever going to get there. So with that lead-in, the other area that, that I am interested in are schools. I've always said I've got two goals, get kids back in school and get people back to work. Right now, it looks like that those goals are being met. And I, I have an awful lot of pushback from school districts, because they have an elected Board of Education, just like we're elected. And that elected Board of Education is interested in their being able to decide whether or not that their students have to wear a mask in school. I'd sent out an email yesterday to each of the superintendents that have students that I represent. So I sent an email to Goddard, Cheney, Renwick, Mays. Mays School District is not really in my district, but a lot of the students are. And USD 259 in Wichita. And I asked them, do they want their Board of Education to have the authority to decide whether or not to, to wear a mask? Because if we look at the data, the students aren't a problem, and the teachers are vaccinated. We, we've taken care of that. And I received an email back from Renwick, and they absolutely want their Board of Education to have the authority to do it. I received an email back from Mays, and they want their Board of Education to have the authority to make the decision on when to wear a mask. I did not receive an email back from Goddard yet. Wichita sent an email that they'd like to continue the mask mandate, but if we don't continue the mask mandate, that they would like authority to decide what to do. And I got the same response from Cheney. So I guess my question is, why do we, as the Board of County Commissioners, the Board of Health, overrule another elected body? One of the things the legislature did was push it down to the county level, because we're closest to what's going on. And we're not the closest to what's going on in the schools. So I, I don't know why that we wouldn't allow an elected group of individuals to make the decision on whether or not to vaccinate the people in their, in their school district. So I'd just like some comments on that.
You know, I may have to turn to the attorneys. I don't really know about all these jurisdictional issues. So I don't know if they want to comment. I'm not aware of exactly. I know in some school, things sits under the schools and it's under my order.
Did I misspeak? It's, it's masks is what I'm talking about.
Justin Wagner, Assistant County Counselor. Commissioner Dennis, I mean, ultimately, you, you and the other Commissioners can certainly modify Dr. Menz's order. I, I think as a board, and Commissioner Howe can correct me if I'm wrong, I think you did have this discussion back when school first started, back in August or September. And I think Dr. Menz's orders at that time did apply to schools. There's no exception for schools. So at that point, you know, he, Dr. Menz has kept that language in subsequent orders. But you can certainly amend that if you would wish to do so. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have on that.
I, I believe that the Attorney General has weighed in on this. And what's the Attorney General said about it?
Sure. The Attorney General, the question that, that the Attorney, Kansas Attorney General was asked was whether the Governor's executive order that pertained to masks in schools, you know, whether that had to be followed within counties. There, there are really two questions. One was, is it a statewide order? I, I think the, the answer to that was yes, it was a statewide order that, that could be amended by Boards of County Commissioners if they wished to do so. And, and as a board, you did opt out of that particular order. You opted out of the Governor's mask order that applied to schools. Back in, I think it was either August or September. I can't remember the exact timeframe. And then the second question was whether the, under Kansas law, whether the Governor could use her powers under the Kansas Emergency Management Act to require the wearing of masks within schools. And the Attorney General's opinion was no, because the Kansas Constitution vests state school boards with the power to essentially administer their schools. There's some, there's some language in the Kansas Constitution to that effect. That is a different power than what Dr. Menz has. That was also, I mean, legally, you know, speaking from legal precedent or standpoint, Attorney General's opinion is persuasive authority, but it's not legally binding authority that has to be followed by anyone. But it is certainly something a court may rely upon. And I think there are some parallels one could draw between Dr. Menz's authority in this context and the Governor's authority. I think there are also probably equally strong arguments that could be made that are contrary to the point the Attorney General had, and that local health officers would have this authority. But no courts opined on that to this point.
Okay. Well, well, thanks, Justin. I guess my concern is that I don't see that there's a problem in the schools right now. The, the rate that they're, that the students who are coming down with the virus is very, 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 very small. And all the teachers are vaccinated. All the staff is vaccinated. I, I think it's time that we turn this over to the local Board of Education, because they are elected to do this job.
Have, have the schools told you what percent of their teachers have gotten vaccinated?
We've given the opportunity to 100%.
I know we've given the opportunity, but you keep saying they're all vaccinated.
Okay. And they're not all vaccinated.
It's mainly the staff in the schools have been the problem, because they get sick and then they don't have enough staff to cover the classrooms. We know the kids aren't really, too much risk of this. I have no idea what percent of the teachers have gotten vaccinated. All I know is this population is still susceptible to a large extent, and the virus is still here. So I'm trying to ask people to continue to do the things we know that decreases transmission.
But we've, we've given the opportunity for 100% of the staff and teachers to have the vaccine, just as, as we started, I started my conversation a little bit ago. We've got hundreds of slots open every day, but people aren't taking the opportunity to take that vaccine. So I can't, I can't force everybody to comply with something when we've got a group of people that won't.
I understand. But just like, I, I acknowledge that the biggest concern I have is the people who don't want to take the vaccine. I don't know when we'll get to that target, and we may not get to the target. We may have to reconsider where the target is. But I just want to verify, for each group that's been offered the vaccine, I have no idea what percent have availed themselves to that opportunity. And so I have to assume there's still a number of people in those groups who are not immune.
Well, the problem, your, that your data that you're using, we don't have the data.
Yep.
We can't get anything out of the state of Kansas. We have no idea how many people at the hospitals have been vaccinated. We have no idea how many people in the nursing homes have been vaccinated. We have no idea how many people in long-term care have been vaccinated. We have no idea how many people at McConnell is vaccinated. We have no idea how many people the VA is vaccinated. We have no idea of anything except for what we've got locally, that we've done.
And you're right. And that's why I urge people to continue to wear this mask and social distancing and washing.
But I guess my question goes back to schools. That, that's where I started from.
I, I don't know where the schools are at in terms of how many people are immune and how many people could be transmitting this virus between staff. I have no idea. I don't have the numbers. You're right. But I do have to assume some didn't take it. And I have to assume there's some people who are still susceptible and could get infected and could transmit it.
Well, for the people that aren't getting vaccinated, I can tell you, for an individual that had the virus, I know three of the Commissioners have had it. It's not fun.
Yeah, I know.
You don't want it.
That's what I'm saying. I am agreeing with you. You don't want this.
Under no circumstances do you want to get this virus. But I, we also need to look at the entire community and, and what their needs are in the community. And, and I truly believe that we're stepping above what we need to when we've got another elected body out there that can make a decision. That's all my comments right now, Mr. Chairman. Later on, I may want to make a, a motion. Thank you.
Okay. Just a, Commissioner Lopez wants to speak, but let me, let me just make a point of clarification. So, Justin, when you said that we opted out of the Governor's order, statewide order, we've all caught a little bit of a misinterpretation on that. I recall that we opted out the same day so we could add back in, we could add face guards to the masking order for the, for the specifics for the schools, because face guards were not included in her order. So we had to opt out of her mask order to re-adopt the mask order and add face guards.
I think your recollection is correct on that, Chairman. I, I think that was part of the basis behind the Board's decision. I think that was part of the basis behind the board's decision.
Okay. Before, before we get criticized on opting out, but that was the intent. Okay. Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. So, when I think about schools, I remember watching these meetings last year and the discussion that happened around schools and school Boards of Education. And then I also have heard comments up here about, you know, we were elected as the Board of Health. School boards were not elected as the Board of Health. We were. So, I think passing that off to the schools is, you know, not the best approach to this. I understand one of our districts really wants masks to be gone, but I guess before we look at that, I'd like to know how many school districts there are in Kansas. That school district compared to, let's say, USD 259 student-wise, can we get the breakdown of that to see the difference there? Can we see if the teachers at that school district want masks to be kept, or if they're wanting, if they're all on board with what their Board of Education wants by not having the mask order? And, you know, kids can still spread this. So, even though we're getting our teachers vaccinated, as many as they want them, I mean, kids go home to their families who might not have been vaccinated yet, and they go, you know, and so forth and so forth. And so, I think that's one thing that definitely worries me. I know 259 had an amazing turnout for theirs. They had a little less than eighty percent of the teaching staff and bus drivers and everybody who got the vaccine, which was huge. I know other districts in my district, too, were not even remotely close to eighty percent, which is now what we're kind of hearing from Dr. Menz would be the herd immunity effect there. So, I think, you know, taking this off is just a little too soon. I understand that we have given this opportunity to every teacher and every teaching staff, and I, you know, I wish more of them would have taken it. But regardless of if we've offered it or not, we're not, I mean, they're not at the eighty percent in every school. And I just don't think it's the safest approach. I know, like Dr. Menz was saying, we are so close. If we're in that twenty-two mile of the, of the race, I mean, we are so close. And I think just doing anything to, to go backwards right now, because, you know, our hospitals and our medical staff are really finally getting that rest that they need, and I would hate to put this in the hands of other people who might not have the same information we get because we are the Board of Health, and just let them make that decision. I think we have to keep with masks in schools if we're going to keep with masks in the community. I don't think we can do one or the other. I think it has to be a unified approach. But if we could try and find out, maybe percentage-wise for all the districts in Cedric County, on our teaching staff and everybody else that works there, and how many, you know, percentage-wise, they've, they have been vaccinated, I think that would be a good start to this conversation. But I know for some of mine, I mean, we're looking at fifty, sixty percent of teachers, and that's just, I mean, that doesn't have the same effect regardless of if they've all been offered it or not. Thank you.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of questions for Dr. Menz. Thank you again for being here today. And I know you're in a very tough, tough job, and I, and I thank you for your service to Cedric County. I know it's tough, and I appreciate.
You're welcome.
All you do here. But I do have some questions. Your analogy on, on running a marathon, I think the difference between running a marathon and what we're dealing with here, in my opinion, is that there's a clear finish line. I think the other commissioners have already spoke to that. And one of the frustrations I think the people are, are voicing is they don't know what the, they don't know what the thresholds are, they don't know what the metrics are to move us out of the health orders. And so, you know, what, what you talked about today, the rationale for continuing, you said that there's still a serious risk, and you said there's still variants out there, and you said there are still people going into the hospital. And I, you know, I want to let, I would just reiterate, one of the reasons we started health orders in the first place specifically was to make sure we had health resources available, available for people who needed that type of help. And that was a huge concern at the very beginning of this pandemic. The virus is still spreading, you said, and people are still susceptible and are not immune. Those are the phrases you said. I guess, I guess my question to you would be this. Do you think that any of those comments will be substantially different in a month, or say, on April the thirtieth, or even May thirtieth?
I think if we can continue the rate of vaccinations that we're doing now, there'll be much less transmission. People will come and fill up those slots. And I would ask you all to help get the word out and see what we can do to ask people to get the vaccines so we can get those numbers up there.
Despite some people who might characterize me or accuse me of doing the opposite, I have been actually advocating for vaccinations publicly.
Good.
And I'll continue to do that. And I plan to get the vaccination myself, and my family, I think, will do the same. But I've been accused of being one that would be anti-vax, you know, anti-vax theory on this particular vaccine or whatever, and I've not, I've not taken that position at all.
Good.
So, let me set the record straight on that. But the reality is, I think we're going to see probably, and I'm going to speculate, the state said there's six hundred thousand people in phases three and four. And when we open up that gate here in Cedric County next Monday, I assume that we're going, we are going to do that, I assume, that, that within a few weeks, we probably will see open, open appointments once again. And at that point, I think we need to recognize that everyone in this community that wants to be vaccinated has had access at this point.
Yes.
I think that's, it's a critical point in the future. Again, right now, there are people out there that really desperately want to have the vaccine.
Right.
They feel like they're at higher risk, and they, they want to have the vaccine. And until they do that, I think that this community is, in a sense, does owe it to them to be, be sensitive to their, to their, to their opinion about their own risk. I think that, that makes some sense to me. But there's a day coming, not too far away, where I think we're going to see many open appointments, and the gates will be wide open for any, for anybody. So, I think that's a trigger. If we wanted to identify a threshold, would you agree with that?
I would say, if you wish, we should move the twenty-six mile finish line, is not the eighty percent herd immunity, but everybody has had the opportunity to get it. And that is not the case today, and it won't be the case in the next six weeks. Maybe at the end of the six weeks, we'll see. But I, I don't feel people who have not had the opportunity to get the vaccine, still circulating, still going to work, still going to school, I think the rest of us should do what we can to make sure we're not giving it to them. And that's why I think the mask mandate should go on a little longer. So, I don't, I'm not arguing with you. I think the opportunity to get the vaccine is an important threshold.
Good. I think, I think we agree on that. Good. I would just also point out that we've had estimates on how long each one of these phases would take in Cedric County, and I think we've been surprised over and over by how fast we went back to open appointments on the calendar. And it's almost frustrating because we know there's a population out there. We would like to see them get a vaccine, but they're choosing not to for whatever reason. So, I'm going to, I'm going to predict, if you will, that we're going to get through phases three and four rapidly and be back to that same point again. It might be six weeks. You might, might make a cookie bet over that deal. But the reality is, I think I'll be right, and it'll be less than six weeks before we get to that point, and I hope that that's the case. But, or I should say this, I hope that people get the vaccine. And that might be a better way to say that. As long as we continue to have full appointments, then, then I think that we have across the threshold. But please don't interpret my comments, and I'm encouraging someone not to get the vaccine. It's not my point at all.
And don't misinterpret my comments. I agree with you on both factors. I would like everybody to have had, at least I can say you had the opportunity to get the vaccine.
And can you please clarify? I'm not a doctor, and you are, so please clarify, if someone gets the first dose of Pfizer and Moderna, what's their relative immunity from that first vaccination?
You know, I could get the papers for you that were published that described the results of the Pfizer and the Moderna vaccine. I think the things that were said was like fifty to sixty percent after the first dose, and then it took it up to ninety-five percent, ninety to ninety-five percent after the second dose.
Okay.
Now, when they say sixty percent, I don't know if that means they had antibodies or a certain threshold of antibodies or whatever. I've not seen the exact definition of that percentage number. But nevertheless, and the people who got the vaccine, for either vaccine, I believe none of them had to go to the ICU. Some of them did become infected, and we don't know whether they got infected in the first week after the vaccine, so the vaccine really hadn't taken effect. But it did prevent death, and it prevented ICU admissions. Now, they, so they had that six-week period after the first dose. And after that first dose, I don't believe any were admitted to the ICU or died. So, I'd have to say, probably pretty quick, even after the first dose, had a pretty major impact upon those severe outcomes.
And I'm, and I would not want to miss the point that there may be some, you know, some fairly long-term consequences of getting the virus, even if they don't have it, end up on a ventilator in the hospital or die from the virus. So, I don't want to minimize that. I have, I've read some independent studies as well, and I think the number I'm reading is around seventy percent. I think we're, it's in that range somewhere. And I think that the point is that if any of the, any of the vaccines, that does a tremendous job of keeping people from having to go to the hospital and, and have a threat of, of death from this virus, that, that part of this, it seems to be mitigated mostly by the first, first vaccination. So, I appreciate that.
That's the third thing I've agreed with you on.
We're on a roll here.
Yeah. Let's keep going.
I am curious if you know, and I've, I've been trying to find this data. I don't know where to find it. Maybe you have access to some data here, and I think Commissioner Dennis and I have talked about this numerous times. Again, not necessarily even for this community, but for any community. Has anybody done an antibody rate study to find out in the population of what the antibody rate is? Because we know, we have, let me find the number real quickly. We've had four, forty-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine cases showing on our, on our dashboard today. It has been stated in the past that the antibodies, we don't know how long they last, maybe it's ninety days, maybe it's twenty-five years, we don't know. But there's obviously people who've had COVID-19 that never got tested and never were included in our number here. So, we don't know what the possible antibody rate is, and I would love to know if there's any type of extrapolation we could find for any community that has done an antibody rate analysis.
Part of the problem we've had with the antibody tests, as I've reviewed it this setting before, is a lot of the antibody tests that were approved under emergency use authorization were very poor tests. And FDA was approving them because we were in an emergency, we were in a crisis, and so they thought it was best to get them out there without requiring them to go under the scrutiny that they usually have to have before they'll be allowed to be sold. And it's been uncertain to a lot of the healthcare providers which antibody tests are valid. Just a recent paper published this February from the Journal of Clinical Microbiology, where they did a test on a number of them out there, and they did identify a couple that are considered to be very good. And so, I think if people are willing to use those tests, I think that would be a good assessment. But I've not seen anybody who's taken that test and gone out and tested people who thought they had the virus, or maybe they just random people who didn't think they ever had the virus, but maybe were symptomatic carriers. So, how many of those have antibodies? I've not seen that data.
I think the immune system is an amazing thing. There may people who, maybe people who came in contact with the virus and developed antibodies, and they had no idea. We never tested them.
That's right.
And if you were to test them today, they might, they might show antibodies from the immune system doing what it does in an amazing way. Early on, we talked about the R naught number. R naught being greater than one shows a, an expansion of the virus in the community. I've been trying to find an updated R naught number for coronavirus, and I'm not being able to find that. Are you able to, to, to talk about the R naught number for this virus at this point?
Not this morning.
I would ask you to maybe, if you can help find that data, that would be, that would be interesting to look at, because that tells, tells you, if it's greater than one, it's going to be expanding in the community. If it's less than one, then it's waning in the community. Based on the data that I'm looking at, I'll just tell you, I did some analysis just yesterday. We've had sixty-four days in a row of continuous improvement on our dashboard. One of the things that's noteworthy, a couple of things that are noteworthy there, one of them is, although our, our percentage positivity rate is down to two-point-seven percent right now on the dashboard, it needs to be noted that we only had seven cases yesterday. Their testing rate is about one, is about twenty, about one-twentieth of what it was back in November. Maybe less than that, maybe it's one-thirtieth of what it was back in November. And so, our positivity rate as a calculation is, is two-point-seven percent of those that were tested. But the reality is, we've only had seven cases out of a population of five-hundred-and-twenty thousand people. So, the actual rate for the entire population is extremely low, and I, I think that we need to.
We've had, that number is the number that we're diagnosed.
Correct. Seven is the number of positive cases.
As you just alluded to earlier, we don't know the people who didn't think they had it or didn't think their illness was bad enough to go get tested.
I agree.
So, we don't know the true rate out there, is what I'm saying, of people who could be potentially infectious.
I, I completely agree with you. And I guess my point would be this, only two-hundred-and-eighty-nine people were tested yesterday, or should say, we got the results back that they were tested. You know, back in November, this was, you know, seven hundred people. As a community, we're doing, you know, upwards of four thousand tests per day. Should say, we were getting around seven hundred cases, excuse me. We were, we were getting, you know, four, four thousand or more tests per day at that time. So, we, we are drastically different than we were back in November. And I, and I appreciate the fact that things are different now, and one of my head-scratches is exactly what has changed. I don't really understand, because I don't think we can attribute all of this change in data to our health order or necessarily something we put our hands on. I think it's, it's elusive as to what's causing the change.
I would agree with you. If you actually look at the curve nationally as well as locally, we've had three waves of this virus. The first two are kind of mini-waves, and then all of a sudden, something let loose in November, and the, it just went up like a rocket. And I haven't talked to anybody who understands this virus and why we had too many waves. We had the health orders and all that. Now, I don't, I can't prove this. A lot of it you alluded to, it's, I have no data. One thing I would maybe propose, I think when the numbers skyrocketed for reasons that I can't find anybody in the country who knows exactly why this virus just cut loose in late October and November. But once it did cut loose, as you know, the hospitals were maxed out, and our hospital executives came to us and said, something's got to change. I don't know for sure, but maybe when people saw that we at a crisis level, they decided, boy, we need to get, this is the time. What can I do? I can wear a mask, I can physical distance, I can do that. And maybe that helped bring the numbers back down. I don't know. That's the only explanation I can think of. But I do think that got people's attention when the hospital executives came and said, we can't go any further. It's got to stop.
Is, is there anything in the, that's, I appreciate that perspective, and I, I think we agree once again. Is there anything in the data right now that has you on guard, that you're concerned about specifically in the data that you could say, this is the thing I'm putting my eye on right now, I'm a little, I'm a little concerned about that?
Well, as I said in my comments, I am concerned about the variants, and I don't think any of us know what the variants are going to do to the case numbers in this country. We know, we, we know in Europe, and Europe's in a different position than us. I don't think their vaccination rate's gone as well as ours has gone. But I know in Europe, they're, they're sliding back, the numbers are going up. Italy's going up again after having such a terrible time, even before we had a terrible time. So, I'm looking at what also is happening in other countries, what the effect of variants is being in the other countries, looking at how prevalent the variants are becoming in this country. I know the CDC is all over that. They're testing variants all throughout the country to sample and see how they're doing in other states. So, that is another factor I think needs to be watched.
Very good. Thank you for that answer. I guess what I'm concerned about right now is, yeah, it's my watch, it started doing something. I don't know what it's doing. I apologize. I'm trying to get it to stop. I don't know how to make it stop. I'm trying to get rid of it. Sorry. It's down there. Apologize. I think, I think Siri took over. Apologize for that.
Can we just remove it from the switch? Can we just take it out of the room? Would you mind? Because it's still.
It's down on the, yes, I can't do that.
Would you mind?
Just a second here. Hang on. I'm trying to get rid of it. I didn't do it. It just happened on its own. Thank you, Apple. Thank you. I apologize for the interruption. Again, we've had, we've had concerns about spring break. I think that, I understand that because I think the assumption is that people aren't going to follow the health order.
Well, if you watch TV, at least the locales in this country where people go for spring spring break, there's, no one's wearing a mask down there. Florida's, looks like it's wide open, and so I'm not saying that's representing what will happen in our state, but I, unfortunately, there seems to be some behaviors that are not conducive to keeping this thing under control.
Have we seen some uptick in the data based on, it's like the Super Bowl parties that will happen and things like that?
Well, again, it's supposition, I mean...
Okay. So, again, I, I know we were concerned about Thanksgiving and Christmas and New Years and Valentine's Day and other things, and so I think we're going to have concerns about every event like that, I think as we continue to move towards more open. I, I would just make, this is more of a comment, but you know, I know President Biden initially talked about a national mask mandate that would never happen, but many of the states have health orders in place, they're different than each other, and so we have lots of different experiments, if you want to look at the data from different states. I think South Dakota is one extreme perhaps, and maybe New York or California may be the other extreme. And yet you look at the data from those various locations, even including Kansas, I think that the majority of our, of our county, counties in Kansas don't actually have mask mandates. One of the largest counties, in fact, the largest geographic county in the state of Kansas is Butler County to our east. It's also a fairly populated county, and their data looks very much like our data. In fact, Andover, if you think about Andover, it's, it's almost contiguous with, with Sedgwick County, and many people from Sedgwick County actually do their shopping in Andover now. Their data looks much like our data. So one of my challenges, of course, is that I'm trying to correlate the trend lines based on health orders, and I, and I do my very best to do that, and I struggle with that because I think nationally we're seeing movement in the trend lines that looks, you know, every state looks similar, every county in Kansas looks similar, and I'm trying to correlate health orders to trend lines, and I struggle with that. Have you, have you taken a look at that?
No, I haven't.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. So, we talked about follow the science, and I think we should be data-driven. I think everybody likes those terms. I think at this point, it's a little harder today. By the way, I, I know back in March, a year ago, I love the video, by the way, great job on the video. A year ago, we didn't know what we were dealing with. We were, we were told estimates that were just terrifying, and I would agree with the concern that we all had at that time. And I would never go back and second-guess any decision that was made. I think we all did the best we could. But continuing to be data-driven today, I, I'm having trouble with this idea. Dr. Minz, you said a month or two more, and I don't know that we have data to justify. You said, you said the masks will be around for at least another month or two before we get to this potential herd immunity, that you stated that a few minutes ago. I don't know that we have justification today to continue a mandate. I think that we, at one point back in July, we talked about a recommendation. I think at some point, we need to get back to the idea that people have been educated, they understand the risks, they actually have opportunities to, to increase their immunity, and they make personal choices for their freedom and for their, and for their, and taking responsibility for their own health. At some point, we're going to have to move away from a mandate. And I don't know that, I guess I make the point, back to my point with Governor Biden, every state's done this differently, some cities have done it differently. The fact is, whether we have a health order or not, we're not really controlling all of the people. There's people who are never going to wear a mask, I don't know what we tell them. And there's also people who would be, they're going to take their own initiative, they're, they're going to wear a mask even if there's no health order. And so there's a disconnect between the health order and people's actual behavior. And that is a true statement. I think the reality is, whether the mandate comes from the state of Kansas or from the president or from Sedgwick County, there are opportunities for businesses and for employers and for organizations and for individuals and their families to make decisions that are more conservative or more restrictive than what we would tell them they must do. Even if, if we tell them they must do it, they may, they might go out there and not do it anyway. And let me be clear, there are no penalties in Sedgwick County that we're enforcing for failure to wear a, a mask in Sedgwick County. The individual mask mandate is, is not being enforced. So these are, you know, the, the health order, for what it is, is not really controlling the behavior of people. I would say, at some point, we need to move towards an exit strategy, and I would love to see us do that based on data. And knowing, knowing Dr. Minz, that we can always go backwards the other way. If data goes the wrong direction, we could always reverse course and go another direction, I guess, if we need to. But I would, I would ask us, based on data, we should be making our orders based on what we see. And your, and your terminology of throw, throw in, should I say, give up or throw in the towel on what we're, on our successes, I don't, I know that I agree with those things. I think the reality is that this community's done a great job, and there's a point in the future where we have to, we have to move away from health orders and back to individual responsibility and, and personal freedom. So when that happens, I don't know what that is. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't say we're giving up on our, on our war against, against this, against the pandemic. I think that we're going to continue to do the best we can. I, I would like to make a motion here in a minute about the deadline on this, on the order, and I'll do that in a few minutes, but I might make some other comments at that time. Thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. That was a lot to unpack. So I have a couple of questions. One is, is around the communication strategy. So I looked to Tanya, I looked to Akeem. You know, what is the campaign to ease concerns around vaccines that we are going to be pushing out? Last week, I asked about testimonials, having people submit those. I think it's better that folks will hear from their peers in the community around the vaccines that they've received. Are we, is that up and running? Do we have that in the pipeline of things that we're going to be pushing out pretty soon? I know I'm putting you on the spot, Tanya Cole.
No, that's okay. Morning, Commissioners. Tanya Cole, Assistant County Manager. I reached out to Communications, and it sounds like the Health Department has some testimonials. They are not video. And so what we're going to do is we're going to work on pushing that out through social media. We're also going to obtain some video. We're going to go out to the sites and get some videos and push that out. So we're working on that. And if you will give me just a moment, I'd like to speak about our, our communications media plan that we're gonna, that we're working on. We have had a campaign kind of in the works. What has happened is we have moved through these plans so quickly. So everything that we kind of had set up from, starting from Phase Two, and then we were going to push that out, and then we kind of moved through all the phases, and now it sounds like we're going to be moving through Phase Three and Phase Four. So everything that we kind of had planned kind of is getting ditched because we're opening up so quickly. So we're going to meet this afternoon, and we're working with Cott Media to, again, you know, get advertisement out through radio, through TV, through social platforms. We're also going to make sure that we hit Spanish and Vietnamese, you know, making sure that we translate everything. And so we're trying to get that out just as, as quickly as we can. But like I said, everything moved so quickly that as we were trying to kind of meet the phases, everything, you know, opened up again. So we need to kind of pivot and move just as quickly as we can to get that information out. But what we did yesterday and last week is we put the, the information out to the COVID Task Force, and then I also reached out to the contacts that we had with our recovery and business contacts to make sure that they knew that Phase Two opened up, so they can get that out to their network, so we can get some more appointments made, so.
Okay. So I appreciate that. I know that there's a lot of work that's gone into this. You know, at the beginning of this, I talked about what, what number are we trying to hit? What number are we at? So if our media partners are hearing us, they've been great partners throughout this about, you know, maybe making their own campaigns about testimonials of people who have received the vaccine, whether they are feeling great, however they are feeling, to ease fears around this vaccine. So that's one, because we have a, we have a pretty, pretty steep curve. If we're at 25% right now, we want to get to 80. And so that's, that's really all the questions I have for you. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. I have a few more questions around. So in regards to schools, because we, we've kind of been talking about that, I, I can't agree more with Commissioner Lopez and, and her comments. I won't belabor all of those. But I wonder, you know, we're almost, school is almost out. We have two months, roughly around two months left of school. The things that kind of concern me are, yesterday I was listening to, how many people are traveling? That's what people do for spring break. Just yesterday, they talked about they had 1.2 million people traveling over the weekend. So we're going to see a lot of people moving around. We have a United States full of different restrictions and guidelines. And so we're going to see people who are going in and out of our state that could possibly be bringing this virus in. Obviously, with the new variants, we're going to have some challenges. Also, besides the Israel study, we don't know whether the COVID vaccine will prevent us from spreading the virus. So there's so, there's too many unknowns to give up on the things that we're doing now. From the very beginning, we've talked about, we only have so many tools in our toolbox. And to the analogy of the marathon, I think it's important that we utilize those tools. So, you know, the one thing around schools is how many teachers, even given the opportunity to receive the vaccine, have not received it. And so that's, that's where I'm kind of nervous about this. From the very beginning, I've asked and said that I was going to pay attention to what the health experts are saying. And Dr. Minz, if you could just reiterate one more time how you're making these, these decisions and who you're making them with. We've heard a lot that you're making them on your own, and that's just not the case. So could you please remind the community who you are making these decisions with?
Well, I discuss it with our physicians through their medical society, and I believe the medical society has also made their recommendation. I listen to the reports that we get from KDHE every week on Thursdays and listen to them. I know there's some who may disagree with some of the things they do, but at least I think it's important to keep up with them. Certainly, I try to stay abreast of what CDC and their representatives, Dr. Fauci, are advising us to do. And the literature, I try to keep up with the literature about this case, and I'm happy to share this article about antibody testing with anybody who would like to have it. So that's kind of a overview.
So, thank you for that. We've also heard a lot of information around Texas opening up our neighbors to the south. And they, Texas and Mississippi, were two states that have enacted the rapid reopening, and their cases have slightly risen over the last two weeks. And so Texas recorded the second highest number of cases and death across the country during the last week. So I think that that's a real testament to opening too quickly. The other thing is those governors also stated that vaccine rollouts were the key factor to enabling them to fully reopen when they are actually below the national average with only about eight or nine percent of their populations being fully vaccinated. So I think we're doing a good job. I just, I can't state enough that we have to stay the course, and that's where I sit on this, this issue right now. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lopez.
I guess one point I would like to just throw out there is, you know, as we continue learning about this vaccine, the data that we have is changing very rapidly. So if we look at the data from March 2020 to what we see today, it's two completely different things. And so we have to be able to pivot and be able to move with, with everything as we're learning it. And so I think trying to just find data-specific things is not a true story of where we are, and we have to continue to, you know, keep our minds open and continue to learn about this as we're going. And I think we've, you know, done a really good job doing that, so I am happy about that. But I, I agree that if we could see a deadline maybe, but I don't really look at the deadline as a date so much. Instead, I really kind of look at it more like a percentage. If we can get to that percentage, that would be our, you know, our, our time that we can remove masks and everything, which is why it's going to be critically important that we, as a Board of Health, that, you know, our partners and people in our community are really pushing and encouraging people to get this vaccine. I, I think, you know, having a deadline in place is what we all want. I mean, we are, we are all ready for these masks to go away. I know I am too. But, you know, doing that in the safest way possible. So I think that's going to be our biggest hurdle going forward, is really how do we encourage our community to get vaccinated to the point that we can say, yes, we are going to do this. But I think putting a date on it is not the best way to do that. I have a couple of other questions. I don't know if Tom or Tim might be the best one for this, but I had a woman reach out to me about an out, someone from out of town. She had her first dose, I believe, in Colorado or somewhat, somewhere, and it was a Pfizer shot. Her flight is canceled, there's storm, something, she can't get home in time to get her second dose. So in situations like that, are we able to give them their second dose here if they can't get back in time for theirs? Or how far with Pfizer or Moderna can we push out that second dose where it's still going to have the best efficacy rate? And really, what's going to be the best way for her and other individuals that could potentially be in that same boat there?
Well, first of all, I agree with you. There's a lot about this virus we still don't understand, and there's a lot of studies that are going to have to be done about the vaccine to answer some of these questions. So at this point, it would be a best estimate or a medical estimate based on best understanding, but we don't have hard data about, okay, if you miss the second dose, how long can you wait before you get another dose? Some are saying, since the Johnson &amp; Johnson is a one-dose vaccine, if you miss the second dose on your way out, maybe it'd be best just to get the Johnson &amp; Johnson, which seems to have fairly good coverage just with one dose.
So for, in this instance, can this individual set up a vaccine here for a Johnson &amp; Johnson or a second dose fight? Or what, what should they do in this particular situation?
My suggestion would be they call the vaccine telephone line, and then we'll work through with them to figure out what makes the most sense for them. But there are going to be instances where someone gets the first dose in another state, and then they move here, and this is their new permanent home. We want to make sure that we're able to vaccinate them. So we'll, it'll depend on what kind of vaccine they receive first and what we have available at that time. But we'll work with them to make that happen.
Perfect. Thank you. And then my last question is regarding our community partners. Does Health Corps, did they ever get any vaccines?
We did make contact with them again yesterday, and they are ready. And so we think that by the end of the week, we'll, we'll have the information back from them that will allow us to do a transfer to them.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Can I follow up on your comments?
I agree with you. A date's difficult, and I, we've only had one-year cycle with this virus. We're still learning about it. We don't know what these variants mean. If we just abandoned the health order in maybe a month, April 30th, whatever, because we think things are looking good enough, that maybe we could do that. Maybe, maybe it's May, I don't know. Have to see what the data looks like then. But once we do lift the orders, we'll have to watch and see how things go. We may have to pivot back if things get bad. Or even if they don't, if this virus behaves like influenza and becomes a winter virus, and it mutates like influenza does, we may be talking about booster doses next November. We haven't had enough experience with the virus to know that yet. So at that point, we'll just have to see what the booster dose is available and when it's available. And so I'm just saying, this, we're still, in terms of the analogy of a race, we're, we're really in the initial race. There's probably going to be subsequent things we're going to have to deal with. As we learn more, we watch the virus, see how it behaves, does it mutate enough that by next winter, we're going to have to get boosters for everybody? So we'll see. A lot is still to be learned.
And I guess my biggest concern with putting a date on it is setting an expectation that we potentially couldn't keep. And it's a lot easier to put a percentage on it instead of saying this date, because if then at that date, we are not where we need to be as far as our vaccine percentage, then it's a terrible thing to have to get people's hopes up and then say, never mind, we can't keep this because of the data at the moment. So I do think putting potentially a percentage on that, if that's something we could get and then tell people if we hit this percentage, we can be done with masks and just kind of watch how it goes from there. But I, I just disagree on the date. Thank you.
Well, I would propose this goes till April 30th. We should have a lot more vaccinations given by April 30th. We'll see where we're at.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just received an update from Superintendent Renwick School District. A hundred percent of their faculty had the opportunity to get the vaccine, and 60% accepted that and received the vaccine. So if we use your metrics, we'll never, ever, ever get there. So that's a concern. The other thing I did was I did a quick Google to see how Kansas managed the mask order. And there's a nice map that I was able to pull up. There's not a single county anywhere touching Sedgwick County that has a mask order right now. A lot of those people that live in all those counties that are touching Sedgwick County work within our county borders. And so they go home at night, and they're not wearing a mask because there's no mandate to anywhere. As a matter of fact, it looks like there's only 24 counties out of 105, according to the data that I was able to pull up, that have a mask order right now. And I'm not saying at all that any of our orders have been wrong. I've supported every one of them. I voted in favor of every one of them. But what I'm saying right now is that we have school districts out here that are not having a problem, that the teachers have had an opportunity to receive the vaccine, and if we're going to wait for all of them to receive the vaccine, we'll never get there. I, I believe that we need to let the school districts with their elected bodies make the decision. And if they don't want to make a decision, then they fall with under the order. If they, they would have to make an overt decision in order to vote to not have the mask mandate, because your order right now applies to them. So I, I think that we need to give them the authority in order to be able to make the decision for their school district. So therefore, I move that... So therefore, I move that the Board amends the local health order number 20, 21-4, Section 2, 3A, before the parentheses in that subsection, to read as follows. It is highly recommended that individuals within schools wear a mask or other face coverings. But whether the individuals within the schools are required to wear masks or other face coverings is left to the discretion of each school's, school district's governing body. This, that's the entire motion. This then is their discretion. If they want to make overt action to eliminate the mask mandate in their district, they have the opportunity. But if they don't, Dr. Min's order does prevail. So that's the motion that I'd like to make. Thank you.
Okay. Could you repeat the motion again, please?
Certainly. I move the Board amends the local health officer's order number 20, 21-4, Section 2, 3A, before the parentheses in that subsection, to state as follows. It is highly recommended that individuals within school districts wear masks or other face coverings. But whether individuals within the schools are required to wear masks or other face coverings is left to the discretion of each school district's governing body.
Commissioner Lopez.
I just, I just have one quick comment on that. When I was going to the different school districts when they were getting their vaccine, one thing that Clearwater had mentioned is it's so much easier for them to hold their mask mandate in place when it's unified. Because if it's not, then they're going to get pressure to change their mask mandate because the parents might not want their kids wearing a mask in school, or whatever the case may be, right? But if we say, you can take it down if you want, then that's really putting pressure on all the districts to change, you know, to, to not follow the science, right? Or, but just be pressured into changing something that maybe they wouldn't want changed originally. And I would just state one more time that, you know, when I watched this exact conversation happen last year, you know, at the time, it was just, we are the Board of Health. And even since I've been here, that comment has been made numerous times where we were elected to the Board of Health. Regardless of our experience in the past with medicine or not, that, that's our job. Our Board of Educations, they were not elected to give orders on, when it comes to health and public health. And I would argue that up here, we get a lot more data than our Board of Education could potentially get in making these decisions. So we can make more of an educated decision. We do have Dr. Min's that can come and talk to us, and we can ask to get something, you know, if we want to know about something, we can ask for that, and we get that. I don't know if these school boards have the same access to receive that information. I don't know if they would feel pressured to make changes because it's not unified anymore. I think we're so close to the end of this that we need to hold strong, and as the Board of Health, we need to make decisions about healthcare. I do not think we should put this on individuals who are, who are volunteering their time to be on a Board of Education. I do not think it is fair to put that on their shoulders. And if their, if our numbers start to rise, I don't think it's fair that that could be on them for, you know, potentially why they're having outbreaks in their schools. So I would completely disagree about giving that over to the Boards of Education. And I would just say if it's, masks are in our community by the health order, that needs to be unified. It can't be picking and choosing who gets to make that decision and who doesn't, because the Board of Health should be making that decision. Thank you.
And Chairman, can I make a slight clarification?
Sure.
And Commissioner Dennis has made the motion, but I wanted to maybe clarify a bit, and if, if, if there's any interest in modifying it or any ways, I'd be happy to help advise on that. This motion, the subsection it applies to is within the exemptions. So it would actually make it to where people in schools don't have to wear masks unless the school district's governing body would make them. So essentially, it would make the school district in a position of either probably making a decision one way or another unless they, you know, and requiring it or not requiring it. I think it could be worded, Commissioner Dennis, from what I understood and the intent behind it, you're, perhaps the, the intent was to have it apply unless they opted out of it applying and giving an option. And so I think perhaps some alternative language. I, I don't have it ready right now. I just wanted to see if that was the intent that you had in, in making that motion.
And my intent was to have this order that Dr. Min signed apply to all of Sedgwick County, but allow school districts, if they choose, to opt out.
I think it might be useful to come up with some amended language on that. Then I, just thinking off the fly here, I think a, a modification could be that, that the, that it would apply, an exemption would apply if a school district's governing body has chosen to opt out of it, and you could still keep the highly recommended language that you have in there. Let, I might put pen to paper here and kind of, and I, again, it's, you're, you're the motion maker. I think you could say it's highly recommended that individuals within schools wear masks or other face coverings. However, if a school district's governing body has elected not to have this, the mask or, mask or other face covering requirements apply within their school, they would not be required. I mean, something along those lines, Commissioner Dennis, if you'd like me to type something up, I could on that. I, but I did want to clarify that.
Well, thank you. I appreciate the clarification, because it's been my intention all along that Dr. Min's order is what stands, but that school districts who are elected have the opportunity to make the decision for their school district only, not for everybody. So I am perfectly happy with amending the order to still say that it's highly recommended that the individuals within the schools wear a mask or other face coverings. However, the school district's governing body may opt to, may opt out of the, of the health officer's order. Is that what we need to say?
I, I think, this is a subsection within the mask or other face covering. I think you could say they may opt out of the Section 2 of this order.
Okay. So then they'd say, however, school district's governing body may opt out of Section 2 of this order.
And, and one other thing I was going to ask about, Commissioner Dennis, is you've, you've mentioned school districts. Would the intent behind this to also be have it to apply to private schools as well in the same fashion?
It should, I, I think it should apply to all school organizations in Sedgwick County.
Okay.
Before we go on, there's a point of, there's a point of preference with, or counsel, the debate that we may or may not have here is, is pending on if there's a second or not. So there has been a motion on the floor, and before we go to further debate, is there a second?
I second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, so now we go to comments. Commissioner Howell?
Yeah, thank you. I actually was going to ask some of the questions you just addressed a moment ago. I think that that needs to be, I agree with Commissioner Dennis. I think that authorizing them the opportunity, opportunity to, to make a choice for their own school district is something I would support. To the, to the argument that we are the elected Board of Health and that we know more than others, I think that the entire community is very smart on this topic. We do see very little data that the community does not have access to. What makes us, the Board of Health, essentially, is we're named that by, by the state statutes, that every county must have a Board of Health, and, and it names the county commissioners as being in that, being that board. But we are not coming to the table as brilliant medical experts, obviously. What we are is able to ask lots of questions and understand the details about the subject matter before us. And I think that we eventually get comfortable with making a decision at some point because we ask lots of questions and look at the data, and we, we, we are given to understanding that data at a very deep level to make the best decisions. And so as a Board of Health, we become qualified through greater understanding. And I think that the, the local, the local elected officials at the school boards have the very same opportunity that we would have. The reality is, we talk about local government and the support for local, local control. I made a comment a few minutes ago about, you know, the federal government was going to, was going to take charge with the mask mandate for the national, as a national policy. And it's, that didn't happen, but, you know, some states have done it, and some, some states have not, and some counties and cities have done it and maybe not. There are businesses, we are, I think we're all familiar with Costco and Menards, that basically led this issue before we ever had a mask mandate. They were enforcing masks within their businesses. And there are many of other, many other businesses and employers that do the same thing. The fact is, we're not, if we don't force them to do this, it doesn't mean that most of them wouldn't do it anyway. There have been people who've, who have said in the past, they don't like to make the decision. They don't want to make a decision because it's a difficult decision to make. They would rather have the county make the decision for them because they believe in what we're doing, and they don't want to be, to quote Commissioner Lopez, they want to be, they don't want to be in the hot seat. I think that's, that's convenient, but I don't think that's good policy. I think, I think the fact of the matter is that the data does not, does not make sense that we would force schools at this point to do this without some of their own buy-in. And I think the data, especially for schools, because they have had the vaccine for roughly a month at this point, access to. Most of them, I'm sure, have had access to a second vaccine. That they are largely, the staff and the teachers are largely protected from, from, from this virus if they've had the vaccine. And the, and the students in the schools, to quote Dr. Min's, he said they are not much, not at too much risk, is what he said, quote unquote. With that in mind, I think that this is a good motion. I want to trust these elected, these elected officials to make good policy for their own schools. They understand locally better than we do, and I think that the decision in Wichita may be different than the position in Renwick, and I think it's okay. The uniformity of this policy doesn't make this better. I think that we ought, we ought to allow different communities to understand the risks and make decisions for their own organization. So I, again, I'm glad to second the motion. I'm glad to support this one this time. Thank you.
Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. So we're talking about elected bodies. We have a lot of elected bodies in our county. We have cities with elected bodies. Are we going to be opening up, if, if this motion passes today and, and granting access to the school board because they're an elected body? Will we be next week opening it up to cities because they're elected bodies as well? Mike, can you answer that question, please?
Commissioner Cruz, Mike Papun, County Counselor. Yeah, the same theory would apply to cities as would apply to, except this, this motion, of course, only applies to school districts. But if the commission wanted to allow cities to opt out of the mask mandate, they could as well, their governing bodies.
Do you feel that if we push this down to the school boards, that it could potentially open it us, open us up to other elected bodies wanting us to do the exact same thing?
You know, Commissioner Cruz, I don't, it's tough to, you know, it's really not a legal issue. I don't know what other governing bodies would do, or what they would want, and it basically would be up to the Board of Health, whether they wanted to expand it to those bodies as well.
So the argument that we have different elected bodies in our community is, is the basis for this motion today. And so I'm just concerned that if we open it up to one elected body, we would then need to open it up to all elected bodies. And then at what point does the Board of Health cease to make decisions? And so that, that's really my, my concern around this. We're at a critical point. When we made masks recommended last summer, we saw a spike in cases. So we do have history with when we make things recommended, how things change in this community. So that's kind of where I stand on this issue. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Commissioner Lopez?
I just would like to have a couple of clarifications made on this. If we're going to, say, all school districts can make their own decisions, are we also going to provide them with Dr. Min's or another local medical leader that can go and have these conversations at each and every single one of these Boards of Education? So they do have the same, some of the same opportunities we get as the Board of Health?
Mike, what's your take? What?
Well, I would imagine Dr. Min's is the health officer for the, for the county. I would imagine, depending on his time and schedule, that either he or other physicians, I'm sure, would be available to school boards if they asked for that.
Okay. And then where does this end? So school districts, private schools, after-school programs, summer schools, YMCA programs that they offer, those are all educational programs. Would they also be excluded from this?
Based on the motion that's been made, Commissioner Lopez, I think it would just apply to probably the K through 12 educational programs, or maybe, some of them have pre-Ks, I believe. So pre-K through 12 schools within Sedgwick County, unless the motion would be modified somewhere, unless further action was taken by the Board.
So higher education's out as well?
In, in terms of post-secondary education, it would not be part of this motion, I don't believe. Commissioner Dennis is the motion maker, but I think it was intended to be for that age range that I mentioned.
And, and I do know that one, one school district has really been pushing to get this done. And it's a smaller school district. So to Commissioner Cruz's point, if we have one small city in Sedgwick County pushing for this, and we decide because we did it for the school board, we're going to do it for them because they're elected as well, does that mean if we change that one city that we change it to everybody? Because then it just seems like, I mean, why do we have a local health order?
And I think I would defer some to the same comments that, that Mike Papun made in terms of, I think that's really a call for, for you all as the, as the Board of Health and Board of County Commissioners to make that determination.
I think it just sets a precedent. So that's, that's my point. Thank you.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I think the argument about opening up to other elected bodies is kind of a disingenuous argument, because if we go back in time, back in July, when the county commission voted to strongly recommend masks, at that time, Commissioner Cruz went over and testified in front of the city council for the city of Wichita, asking them to absolutely overturn what our decision was to highly recommend and to force masks within the city of Wichita. So it's already been decided that any organization can make their own decisions. It doesn't have to be us, because we've highly recommended back in July. Now, we did change later on, but when Commissioner Cruz advocates that a city overturn a decision by Sedgwick County, I think that they've always got those kind of decisions that they can make. So I, I think it's a disingenuous argument. Thank you.
Can I respond to that?
Sure. Commissioner Cruz?
So to be, to be fair, cities could, so Mike and Justin, please clarify, when, when that happened, the cities could be more restrictive but not less restrictive? Wasn't that the case? I mean, they could be more restrictive but not less restrictive. So we're, we're giving the authority for people to be less restrictive than the local health order. Is there a clarification that we could?
Let, let me make sure, and, and Mike can jump in if he wants to. Commissioner Cruz, are you asking about back in July, when the decisions were made at that point? Is that, is that what you're referring to, you're talking about?
Yes. So, so we, as a Board of Health, decided to not enact a mask mandate.
Correct.
So the city was more restrictive than the health order, not less restrictive. That's, that is a distinction, I think, that needs to be clarified.
At that point, the governor had issued a statewide mask mandate, and counties could, after consulting with their local health officers, could become less restrictive if they wanted to. And that was the vote of the, the Board of County Commissioners, I think it was July 2nd. The city had the ability, whether, I don't think it dealt with that particular portion of, of the law or statute. I think under their home rule powers is the, the power they used. They adopted an ordinance under, under city, Kansas constitutional home rule powers to adopt a mask ordinance. They could do that today, too. I mean, a, a city could certainly do that now, but that's, that's the power they used, I think, on July 3rd when they did adopt an ordinance.
So under their home rule, under their home rule powers now, do they have the ability to opt out of the mask mandate?
They do not. To, I'll explain a little bit further. At least my legal opinion is they would not be able to opt out of it, because a, a local health officer is vested with authority to make orders such as this. However, we talked before, back in like October and November, I think, reached agreement with a handful of cities. The enforcement of any, the resolution this Board adopted that made any violation of a local health officer order, a violation of the Sedgwick County Code, the enforcement within city limits of that would require the consent of the governing body. So that could only be done with the, I think there are about four cities that entered into agreements with the county. Any other cities, that enforcement could not occur, you know, in terms of talking about a code enforcement action. And so the cities could still adopt it, you know, if they wanted to on their own, but they can't opt out of this right now, I don't believe, under Kansas law.
Thank you for that part of, point of clarification.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to further clarify, if we, if we made, so the health order did not mandate to cities, that... they would have the authority to implement a local policy that would affect that particular jurisdiction, correct?
That's correct. If that was the law, the Board would amend the order in that way, the cities could still do that.
So again, I would just characterize it this way, whatever the largest jurisdiction is that makes the mandate, unless they provide express permission to exempt themselves from that, then they would be under that particular order. So again, feds rule the state, state rules the counties, counties rule all of the cities, if you will, unless we give them express permission to do otherwise. And every other organization and business and person inside Sedgwick County would be subject to this health order unless we give them express authorization to have an exemption. So again, I think it's pretty, I think it's kind of common sense that the cities could do that if they wanted to, but many of the cities have communicated they would prefer the county to do this, because they don't want to have the decision authority, and they would rather not be in the hot seat, again, to quote Commissioner Lopez. Back to Commissioner Dennis's comments earlier, I would make the point that before July, that, I went back and looked at some of the videos, even in June, we talked a lot about social distancing and wearing, excuse me, social distancing and washing hands, and there was lots of discussion about group limitations. There was virtually no discussion about masks until the end of June and the beginning of July. That's when that topic came up. And when we passed our first health order on this issue of masks, we moved it to a recommendation only, it was the very next day, the Wichita made it a city mandate for the city of Wichita. And again, roughly, rounding it off, roughly 80% of the population in Sedgwick County does live in the city of Wichita. So when they're inside the city of Wichita, they would be under the city's mask mandate. And then it was just four days later, I believe, that we actually came into agreement with the city at that point, on July the 8th, I think it was, was it? They passed this on July the 3rd, we did, I think, July the 8th. So the fact of the matter is, our data, if you look at the explosion in cases and the effect of pandemic on this community, it was during a mask mandate. The mandate did not, again, we might, we don't know, we only know one story here. We know what happened to the data, we know we were under a mask mandate. We don't know what would have happened otherwise. So we only have one correlation there. But this idea that we didn't have a mask mandate and see what happened to the data, I think, is also disingenuous. There was only six days, I believe, or seven days, in the unincorporated where the mask mandate wasn't actually a mandate. So the reality is, I don't think that's a very good data point, and once again, we need to move towards more freedom and more openness and back to a more normal, and I think that the data today, the data today does not support restrictions, especially in schools. So I think this is a good motion, and again, I'm glad to support it. Thank you.
Commissioner Lopez?
I just have a question. If that's, I mean, would you rather see the masks be completely gone then, or are you saying just for schools?
Once, so thank you for the question. Again, my personal belief on this is, no matter what the health order says, we're not really controlling people's behavior. There are people out there that are not going to wear a mask, no matter what we tell them, and there are no penalties for individuals not wearing masks. And likewise, if we don't have a health order, there's plenty of people, businesses, employers, organizations, even cities potentially, or school districts, that will continue to have mask orders because they, in their jurisdiction, have deemed it so. The reality is, I don't know that Sedgwick County mask order is actually controlling people's behavior the way we think it does. And at some point, we need to move to an open and free society here, where people make choices for themselves. At some point, that needs to happen. I think the data says that day is today. We didn't, back in March a year ago, we didn't know what was going to happen. We were very fearful, as a community, about the estimates that we were having. Today, we have got Plexiglas, we've got masks, we've got immunizations, we've got antibodies, we've got, all kinds of education has happened, we're washing our hands, we're being very, there's so many mitigations in place. If we don't have a health order, I don't think we're going to see a drastic pivot in our data that's going to suggest that we somehow caused this to happen. The fact of the matter is, we're not really controlling any of these things today. It's basically a personal buy-in, and businesses and employers, and things like that. I think if we don't have a health order today, I would like to see us go that direction, and if we're wrong, and if the data does pivot, and we get very concerned about the numbers, then we could always come back and visit this again. But I think at some point, we need to get there, and I think, by looking at the data today, I'm convinced that we could get there today. I don't think there's support on this commission to go there, and I think Dr. Menz isn't going to support that. So I may be alone in my opinion here, and I don't plan to make a motion to suggest we would get rid of masks today, because I don't think there's three people on this Board that would support that. But me personally, I would like, if I could express what I think needs to happen, and Dr. Menz, I'm glad you're here to hear, I guess, this next comment. About a month ago, I was talking to Manager Stoltz, and we were talking about, what's the exit plan? And I said, at some point, we've got to move towards this idea of it, but those with immunity ought to have additional freedoms, and maybe those at higher risk don't have immunity, need maybe to continue some of these personal mitigations. And I asked a question, how do we know the difference? Obviously, we're not going to make people wear a label that they say that they're immune. And I don't want to ask people for evidence that they have a health exemption, for example. The mask itself becomes a symbol. Those that have higher risk, that are concerned for their own health, really should wear a mask, and they should take a personal responsibility to do that. Others around them, when they see that person wearing a mask, please don't come close to them unless you also don a mask.
Commissioner Howell, can we limit the discussion to the motion at hand?
That's fine. I want to express my thought on this at some point, so I guess we'll get back with you, Dr. Menz, but I think I've said plenty. Thank you.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second. There's been a lot of discussion, a lot of assumptions, a lot of opinions, a lot of what-ifs. I might comment that this may be a mute motion if the Kansas Legislature pursues, like Senate Bill 286, and other bills to where we have to penalize taxpayers, property taxes to refund going backwards for every damage that happened in 2020 as a result of any of these orders that were made, including masks. If a business was harmed by having a mask requirement, they would be able to file a claim, and property tax owners, that fund from the county would have to refund them. So pending, from my business perspective, if an order like that comes down from the state, I know exactly how I feel, because it could be, every month that goes by would be more cost to the local taxpayers and property tax. So this has been a healthy discussion, but it could be mute based on activity that's going on in Topeka as we speak. So with that, Madam Clerk, there's a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
No.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
No.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Motion carries three to two. Madam Clerk, next item, please. Oh, Tom, is there something else we have to, Dr. Menz? I'm sorry. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have another motion. I would like to further amend the health order, and this is, again, we've had a very long discussion this morning, and thank you for the patience of everyone. With the legislation that's pending, there is a trigger date of April the 30th, 2021, where additional risks to our taxpayers ratchet up on that date if we continue to have a mask order after that date. And I think it's kind of interesting that we picked that very same date in our current health order we're looking at today as being a trigger, or I should say, as being a time where we would potentially move to whatever the next health order would be. And I think we owe it to this community to be dynamic and data-driven. I would like to see us shorten the timeframe a little bit and come back and talk about this again. If the data continues to be, again, we're talking about spring break is happening eminently. If we come back and say the gathering limits has caused this to happen in the data, the school districts having some freedom has caused this to happen in the data, spring break has caused this to happen in the data, we could always come back and visit the health order and make further changes at that time. But I think six weeks is a long time, considering where we are right now. I think it would be more reasonable for us to shorten this up a little bit and come back and have another discussion. The public deserves us to be dynamic and data-driven. So I would make a motion, and Justin, you have copies of this, you want to hand those out, that's fine. Let me read this, it says, "I move that the Board amends local health officer order number 2021-4, Section 8, to state as follows: This order is effective at 12:01 a.m. on the 21st day of March 2021, and shall remain in effect through 11:59 p.m. on the 9th day of April 2021, unless it is amended, revoked, or replaced." And that's my motion.
Okay, there's a motion. You have a copy of it? Is there a second?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. First time I've seen this motion, but I kind of agree.
Beg your pardon. This is the first time I've seen this motion, but I agree that the length of time that we've got for the current order is kind of long, because there's a lot going on right now. And as we've already heard, we've got spring break, we've got other things that are happening, and we need to kind of review exactly where we're at here in the more near future. So I will second the motion, because I think that we need a sooner review than what is in the current expiration date. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. I want to remind everybody that hospitalizations lag by two weeks from the date of positive cases, so this would be, spring break for USD 259 is next week, and so two weeks after that would be the 9th. I guess I'm just concerned that we could start seeing the next week, when cases could start to spike. Dr. Menz, could you speak to that? I could be wrong, I just kind of want you to speak to the case lag or the hospitalization lag of when people test positive from when they enter the hospital system.
Indeed, if the community cases start going up, it may be a few weeks before we see the severe cases hitting hospitals, that's a possibility.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and Dr. Menz, we've had orders before that have been on a date, and you have come in and adjusted those orders before the date expired. Is that correct?
I believe so.
Okay, I think so, too. Okay, well, I think it's ironic that at one time, this motion, the commissioner that made this motion at one time said, "We should not have a short date, we should just let this go on for a long time," and now we want to shorten it. So that's fine, I hear what your motion is, and there's been a lot of discussion today about how some data doesn't impact anyway, because everybody, everything else happens naturally, or whatever the argument was, it was quite long. So now we're going to base it on a shorter date, and we want to look at data. So I just wanted to make that comment. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman, for a chance to respond to that. So this is our 19th health order since July, and I think that my comment was, the people are exasperated. Every time they have a new health order, they become hopeful that things are going to be different, and they find themselves discouraged and disappointed over and over and over again, because the health order is not moving in a direction that they like. So my comment was, I wish that they would give us a date that's far enough in the future that we're not going to continue to play with the emotions of our community. This particular order, in my opinion, is honing in on the endpoint, and I think we need to be careful not to pick a date that's so far in the future that we have data to say we should shorten the health order, but we're not doing so because the date is needlessly way out there. I think, I don't know that I have faith in any of this process to shorten the date when the data says we should do so. So again, I think that keeping this date short gives us a chance to come back, but I don't want to be accused of essentially, you know, picking two sides of the same coin. I think that's not fair to me. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for clarifying. Commissioner Lopez?
I would like to get some clarification, too. It's two weeks after that the rate starts going up, and then it's another two weeks before the ICUs start being full. Is that the timeline typically?
Some people call it a trailing indicator. Before the community cases go up, by the time people get infected, the incubation period has to pass, and then they get sick and report to the hospital.
Okay, so this is just like a two-week deal here. I mean, I have no problem coming back closer to this time. That's proposed April 9th, to look at the numbers where we are at that day, but not change that this order ends that day. So if we could change this to where it's saying, we come back and have another discussion on April 9th, and not just cancel what we have right now, I would be...
Well, like you mentioned, I'm happy to come back on April the 9th and review the data with you, and I suppose at that time, you could make a decision about ending the order if you wish.
Because even if we don't put this in place today, if you come back on the 9th and we say we want to cancel anyway, that doesn't stop us. Is that correct?
No, don't think so. I'd ask legal people to speak to that more than me.
I don't think that there's nothing keeping him from coming back on April 9th and giving you an update, and there's nothing keeping Dr. Menz prior to April 9th from amending his order if he thinks there's a purpose for amending that order. So I'm not sure why we need a date like this, but that's up to the commission.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any other comments? I don't see any. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
No.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
No.
Chairman Meitzner?
No, motion fails. Okay.
Commissioner Meitzner, could I just make a quick comment?
Yes, sir.
I need to depart from here for some other things. Since Mr. Howell's quoting me, I guess I need to be a little bit more clear. I was meant to say earlier that children under the age of 10 have a very low risk of serious adverse outcomes from this disease, or even coming down with an illness. So I just wanted to clarify, because I was using pretty ill-defined terms.
Okay. Clarification, Doctor.
All right, Tom, what next?
I think we want to go through vaccine updates, sir.
Again, Commissioners, Kate's got the slides for you.
We've settled into a bit of a routine with our vaccine clinic. We did have the benefit of having some additional help come from the National Guard, so last week, we did set up a second vaccine clinic at the end of the week. Last week, we had 14,327 people receive their first dose, another 5,074 received a second dose, total of 19,400 doses dispensed. That brings our cumulative total to 24,719, who've received two doses and are considered fully vaccinated, and we've distributed 78,000, almost 79,000 doses. Those are Sedgwick County numbers. Through the remainder of this week, we continue to offer appointments to anyone that's in Phase 1 or Phase 2, so that's individuals over the age of 65, 65 and older, school personnel, healthcare-associated workers, veterinarians, public safety, there's a long list there. I think we've tried to publicize that as much as we could. We've discussed a little bit today already that there are open appointments through the remainder of the week, there are even appointments available today. So I would hope that anybody in the viewing public that's watching this meeting that fits one of these categories and is interested in getting a vaccine, that they go to the Sedgwick County website and schedule an appointment even as early as this afternoon, because we do have appointments available, have a number of appointments throughout the week. Because we've got two large vaccination clinics operating right now, we have over, including yesterday, over 16,000 first-dose appointments this week, and so we want to help the community get vaccinated as quickly as possible, but for that to happen, we need them to schedule and come to appointments. So that's what we'll be doing this week and in weeks following as well. We also are in the process of transferring vaccinations to partners. This week, we've got roughly 7,000 vaccines that are going to other partners. The bulk of those are second doses for individuals, but particularly folks that work in the schools. But we've also identified a number of partners that are able to take additional vaccines, so that they'll be able to give first doses as well, according to the criteria that we're using. We've got two additional outreach opportunities scheduled. The 23rd will be at St. Mark's United Methodist, and the 28th will be at St. James Missionary Baptist Church. So we've received a lot of good support from the Black Nurses Association, they've been very helpful in staffing those sites. And then, one other thing that I wanted to discuss is... And then one other thing that I wanted to discuss, and we touched on it briefly, yesterday afternoon, the governor announced that it's her intention for the entire state to move into Phases 3 and 4 next week, and so we will be doing that as well. And so, again, that's another incentive for folks that are in Phase 1 and 2 to get their appointments scheduled this week because they won't be competing with another large group of people eligible for that first vaccination. So again, I'd encourage anybody that's in Phase 1 or 2 right now that hasn't received their vaccination yet to schedule an appointment, get in. We will be, as we've done in the past, late in the week, we'll make appointments available for anyone in Phases 1 through 4 starting next week. So that's one of the things that staff will be working very diligently on this week. Again, there's more information, and it's, you're able to schedule an appointment at cedriccounty.org, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thanks, Tim. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. Two quick questions. Is the drive-through still going to be open for those, since we're opening it up to underlying health conditions, those who might be ill and not able to get into a vaccine site? Will it still be open?
We will have a limited drive-through option available. I think, and we'll announce that through all the communication channels, I think that will be handled through our call center, but we'll be clear in that information as we roll into those appointments for Phases 3 and 4.
Okay, and then our mobile outreach, where are we at with our mobile outreach to get out in the community for a mobile plan?
Well, one of the things that has been our intention all along is we're able to decrease the amount of staff that we have committed to the drive-through, we're going to convert those folks to mobile outreach, and so now we're going to do that because we are, we continue to give second doses for all the people that received their first dose at the drive-through. We've still got two and a half weeks left of that, but we're developing our plans. And as important as our mobile outreach is partnerships with other providers as well, and so we're working on both of those fronts.
Right, so I know we were working with, specifically in my district, one place was Leakers in Park City, working with Valley Center to have that, those vaccines transferred. Was that completed?
I think that happens later this week.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I continue to praise the Health Department on what they're doing at the mass vaccination centers. I also want to thank the governor for sending in the guard to help us. I went over to the church last Friday, I haven't been over to Extension Center yet, but I went over to the church and talked to each and every one of the folks from the guard that were there that are helping with the vaccinations, and thanked them personally for what they're doing. I'm very proud of how that we're rolling out the vaccine. It's going probably about as fast as we can. We are appreciative of all of the different partners that we can get, especially the different pharmacies and everyone else that can help us out. I do, I am still interested in the mobile plan, I'm glad Commissioner Cruz brought that up, because if you look at my district, it's very rural, it's a long way from Wichita, and I continue to receive feedback from some of the elderly that live out there, that they don't drive into Wichita ever. So I know I talked to the manager, but I don't know what the status is. Are we working with aging to be able to pick folks up and bring them into Wichita for the vaccine?
Based on some of those conversations we've had with you, Commissioner Dennis, we do have the Department on Aging and the Health Department meeting this week to figure out a plan to be able to do a little bit of outreach as well.
Okay, well, as soon as you get that plan put together, we need to, and there are several things we need to get communications involved in. We need to get that plan out so that the elderly, the people that are disabled, that can't drive into Wichita, will know how that they can get the vaccine, but also our communications folks. We just heard 60% of the teachers in one school district accepted the vaccine and the rest of them didn't. It's never going to get us where Dr. Menz wants us to be, so we need some kind of a more aggressive communications plan as we move forward. I'm also very happy that we are next week going to move into the next phase because we've been advocating all along that people with underlying medical conditions need the vaccine, and as I understand, next Monday, they can sign up for the vaccine, is that not true?
That's correct, yes.
Very good, we need to, again, communications to get that word out, that all of those people that we've been advocating for can now start signing up. The last point that I'd like to make, I'm on the Cedric County website right now, actually earlier this morning, there were more openings today, and now I'm seeing that there are only four time periods that are left today. That doesn't mean that there's only four appointments left, it means there's four time periods, there's a lot of appointments in each one of those, but it's filling up. But as I look at Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, it's not full at all. So again, we need communications to help us, and we need the media that's here to help us get the word out that we have a group of openings right now, and we need the people to get vaccinated. But again, thanks for what the Health Department's doing, thanks for working with our community, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, I want to say, I am very, very pleased that the governor has chosen to move vaccines out to Phases 3 and 4. I think this is really, really good news. I don't know that I've heard you describe Phases 3 and 4 yet, have you actually described them, what that means? I don't think I heard that.
It's possible that I haven't. There are two different sets, and Kate's going to pull it up for us, so. Phase 3 includes individuals with a number of different health conditions, and there are some occupations in Phase 3, and then Phase 4 is almost exclusively, again, individuals with health conditions.
And I'm on that website right now, if you go down towards the bottom, there's also a very, pretty good list of what that means down towards the bottom. One of my questions would be, is that an exhaustive list? If someone has something that's a little bit, maybe it's not listed specifically, but that's a medical condition, how are we going to decide whether or not that person is in Phase 3 or 4?
If they aren't called out specifically in either Phase, in Phase 3 in particular, then they're going to be a Phase 4 person. But since the governor has recommended that we take Phase 3 and Phase 4 together, folks that have underlying health conditions should schedule an appointment and receive the vaccine. Again, our goal is to get as much of the population of Cedric County vaccinated as possible, and so this is an opportunity for all of those folks, as you've said, we've been waiting a long time to be able to vaccinate individuals with underlying health conditions, and so the time is here.
I believe if everyone in that population, if we counted them all in Cedric County, it'd be a little more than 100,000 people, is that a reasonable estimate?
Um...
I calculate 108,000 people is what I think, is what I came up with. Of course, I don't think we're going to see everyone get the vaccine, but that's a pretty good number. And so I'm trying to go back to Phase 2, what was our estimate for Phase 2 in terms of population that would be eligible for Phase 2? 125,000 is what I remember.
North of 100,000, yeah.
So it's around, it's roughly the same number, and we went through Phase 2 pretty quickly, but I expect Phase 3 might be a little bit more interest in people actually getting those vaccines. Some people in Phase 3 and Phase 4 possibly have somehow been able to get a vaccine, there's been some creativity by a number of people that found ways to get the vaccine, maybe they're veterans, or maybe they're in a career that, again, would provide them access to the vaccine. So I don't think, I don't think that number is exactly correct, I think it may be less than that, and so I think we'll get through Phase 3 and 4 pretty quickly. I would want to say thanks to the senators in Senate Public Health Welfare yesterday, as well as the county commission here. We did have a public hearing on Senate Bill 295, I did testify in favor of that bill that would have given counties some ability to help make changes to the vaccination plan from the state of Kansas. I think it was a good hearing, and I would like to think, I don't know if this were a fact, but I think that the state, most recently, has said that Phase 3 would be weeks away, maybe three or four weeks away, and so the fact that they've made this change yesterday is, I don't know if it's coincidence or not, but I do think that that bill maybe encouraged the governor and KDH Secretary Norman to make this choice, and I'm proud of us for engaging in that opportunity, and thank you to the senators for adding a little bit of pressure to, I think, a very good decision. I am concerned about the logistics of this, when people have health concerns or health issues, I mean, we even talk about obesity, we talk about all kinds of, you know, disease issues and things like that. Considering HIPAA, what's the logistics on how someone's going to be verified as qualified to get a vaccine under Phases 3 and 4?
Much like we've done, we're still working out the details on that, and we'll make that much more clear towards the end of the week when it's time for people to schedule, but we're going to be very careful about individuals' health information as well. So we'll continue to work with Dr. Menz and try and figure out how to engage the medical community if that's appropriate. Much of the stuff that we've done so far, we've asked people to be honest with us, and we will continue to do that as we go forward.
I guess I would just say, maybe we should just ask for a personal, have them attest that they are qualified, I think that's about as far as it needs to go. I think that we have to trust people at some point, and I think that to make them provide proof of qualifications is a little uncomfortable for me, but I think if they make a, you know, basically sign on the line that they are qualified, I think we have to, at some point, trust them to do so. So I don't know how you're going to do it, but I look forward to the details on that. My final question is this, the drive-through is apparently something that's basically going away, and I, one of the previous commissioners did speak on this, if someone goes to the, one of the other two vaccination sites and they can't physically walk in, what's the process for them to get a vaccine at one of those locations?
Well, if they can't physically walk in and navigate through the process as we described on the website, we would hope that they call the appointment line and see if there's an alternative for them. We're going to, again, as we free up staff from the drive-through, and we may still offer a limited drive-through, we're working through some details there, but we're going to free up staff and try and create shorter lines and smaller venues through mobile sites. And then also, there are a number of other access points in the community, there's pharmacies, there are grocery stores, and a number of different access points throughout the community that will also be able to serve folks that are in Phase 3 and 4, so.
That's good information. I did notice that, at least at the old library, when I was over there taking a look at the process, there was a push button that says, "If you need assistance, push this button", it's on the sidewalk on the entry to the facility. What happens when you push that button?
It notifies someone inside. It's primarily for individuals that are in wheelchairs that want to access that site because that ramp is not long enough to meet ADA guidelines, and so we've got assistants that would come help someone with that ramp, if need be.
Okay, great, thank you for all those good answers to my question, appreciate it.
Commissioner Lopez?
I think most of my questions have been answered already, I was really concerned with HIPAA and how we were going to tackle that, but I'll wait to hear how we're going to do that. And then mobile testing, I was just going to make sure that we were going to, I don't know, can we get a list, once you make that, of where there, what places you're looking at, maybe before you even put dates on them, just so we can ensure that it's, you know, hitting all the areas that it really needs to hit pretty equally and not just...
Certainly.
Okay, yeah, thank you. And then my last question is just about, we had discussions about getting flyers into local businesses, like bilingual flyers into more minority communities and minority-owned businesses. I've been making quite a few connections over the last week on places that would be willing to have those, so I just don't know where we're at with that.
I defer to communications.
Thank you.
Thanks for the opportunity, Commissioner, Keem Ashford, Communications Director. So we've got all of the material made, we were just trying to get through that video which took up a large portion of our time, but after this meeting this afternoon, we're going to work with Tony, our director, to get that done, so.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and I think each of us have our own reach within the community on various ways to get the word out. I already had taken the visit with Utah, who has a large database of all the restaurants, hospitality industry, they've already sent out a message that says, restaurant workers, a lot of them are young and they may not want to, but they need to get in the next two days because as of Monday, it'll be a whole new group, so I think each of us should look at our database of contacts and let them get the word out because they have a large reach. Okay, anything else, Tim?
No, sir.
Okay. Tom, anything else?
I think that's it, sir.
Okay, Madam Clerk, next item. Okay, just let me, if I can say something under other, there was a change in streams here. There was a fantastic article, March 14th, from Roy Wenzel about his experience with EMS and saved his life, story behind routine medical 911 call in Cedric County, and I just want to give a shout out, it's an incredible story, and I want to personally give a thanks to our 911 agent, Kalen Perez, under the leadership of Elora Forshi over at 911. It's to have, to have this thing summarized where she says, "Stay on the line and helping", and I just want to give a thank you to Kalen, she's just one of many, but it was a great story. EMS people, Stuart Fayette and Sarah Cindric, to read what they were doing and saying was just a real credit to the powerful reaction, a quick reaction, and really saved his life. He was out and gone. And then firefighter and paramedics, Garrett French, Dalton Scott, under Captain Rock Baumgartner. So I just wanted to give a shout out to those, thank you, it's just, I know it was just probably a day in their life, a day in their shift, but it just, to me, it helped understand that that's what we do to provide service to this community. Followed up by, I don't have her name, but the forensic science person that spent numerous hours tracking down the DNA on a bad guy was another story of great, great service. So those people are behind the scenes and unknown and out of the public from us, but they do a great job, I just want to say thank you to all those groups for their service to the public. Any other comments? Okay, I don't see any, so with that, we will stand adjourned.